Sheriff, you ready?
No need.
Welcome to the Polan County Board of Commissioners August 26, 2014 work session. I'll call the meeting to order and welcome all of our guests and elected officials. See Mayor Debbie in the back. So, thank you all for being here. I'll remind you to turn off all the cell phones next to us and the pagers as it does interrupt the production. Mike, before we have our invocation, I think we had a pretty rough week weekend. Can you come out and give us an update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. You know, we thankfully live in a county that has tremendous support for our public safety folks and they do a fantastic job protecting the citizens that live here. It's, we've had a run of, you know, I don't know how to classify these and I don't want to glamorize the incidents at all, but, you know, we had the trail incident several weeks ago. This past Sunday, we had a murder suicide that involved an infant where Sergeant Richardson and Deputy, twenty, and Deputy Roman responded to that. And then Corporal Dooley was the crime scene technician that had to go in. And that weighs heavy on them. That was not a pleasant exercise, but it's part of their job and goes beyond what you see on your doctor's description. Yesterday, we had an incident where there was a phone call into our 911 center and, you know, our communication officer deals with this every day. I mean, it is a difficult, difficult job. And there is, there's a young infant female who is unconscious, who's got into some water. And one of the marshals, Marshal Jared Gunnner responded, heard the call, got there, gave that young infant, you know, a second chance at life. The infant's doing better, not out of the woods. But, but these are the types of things, we just had a bunch of them come together over a short period of time. And I think it's just incumbent upon us to recognize that they have an incredibly difficult job. And that doesn't take anything away from our fire department who responds to those calls. And these things happen behind the scenes every single day. We don't see it, you don't see it in the paper, you don't read about it, but it happens. And I think it is fantastic that we have such a big group of people, service folks in Polan County.
Pastor Rodney Carson with Pleasant Grove Baptist Church. If you'll include that in some of your prayer, we would appreciate it. This gentleman puts on one of the finest wild game suppers probably in the southeast. And I guess it's coming up sometime.
March, even the first week of March.
Okay. And also, if you would do our pledge, would you stand with me, Greg?
Boy, I pray, but I just had a meeting with a missionary from Southern India. And last month, they had fourteen pastors arrested on Sunday morning for singing and praying in church. Spent three weeks in jail. So, I just want to thank the commission in this county that they provide, they do allow us to observe the freedoms and freedoms that I think our constitution guarantees just by leading you to a place that you're meeting. My Father, my God, I come this morning and first we praise you and thank you as our Creator and our Provider and our Preserver. And Father, we, we thank you and praise you because you are worthy of that. And Father, as was mentioned earlier, we do lift these individuals up in our public safety, our police, our marshals, and our fire department, Father, that deal with things that, Father, we are most of the time unaware of. Father, I know it has to weigh heavy on their hearts at times as they deal with situations that, deal with the things that remind them of the dangers that their families may face and may go through. Father, we pray that you encourage them and lift them up and the families involved in these situations that were mentioned. Father, we pray your comfort on them, Father, that you would just wrap your loving arms around them and give them what they stand in need of. Now, Father, we pause to ask your guidance, not only in this meeting here today, but, Father, to this county, to the state, and this nation. Father, that we be, follow your precepts. And Father, let your words be the guide to our lives, that, Father, we would conduct ourselves in ways that will bring you honor and bring you glory. I pray again your guidance on this meeting this morning, these commissioners, and thanks for their service and their time and, and again, the public service of this county. Father, we just pray you again, Christ name.
Amen. I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just take just a second. A lot of y'all know that my brother Vance from down there was in a bad work accident in January. And he's had to have three surgeries and he's had a tough time. He was temporarily, thank God, temporarily in a wheelchair. Last few months, he's been walking. And he went in for a pre-op yesterday to have just a minor surgery to relieve some tendons on the left foot and found out that on the right foot, he has some really, really, really bad infection that didn't show up. And so, one thing that they, they pray it doesn't happen. So, long story short, he goes in Thursday and it'll be kind of a six-week battle to see if he's able to keep his leg or not. And so, I just ask that you keep him and his family in your prayers. Yesterday was a tough day and a lot of y'all have prayed and I appreciate that. And even some of you have done some financial support for him. So, for our families, it's been a tough time. I know God will get us through it one way or another. Just pray for Doctor's guidance. I'm not pressured so much. Thanks, friends. Keep men's prayers. Also, if you would remember Mike Shaly, Mike's that I see you. He probably came to come here in Prewood. Mike and Becky Shaly. And he's, he's going through a tough period also. So, keep that family in mind. And once a year, there's a group of pastors that come and invite us to come downstairs and to do the laying on the hands and they pray for us. And Mike's led this group for years, so it's time now for us to return the favor and keep him in our prayers, so that y'all will listen, remember those folks. Now to business. Minutes to August 26, 2014 work session minutes and August 26, 2014 board meeting minutes are available for review. The Board of Commissioners would like to present Captain Sherry Butler. Sherry, you come forward. With the State of Georgia Department of Public Safety with proclamation honoring her for her service to Polan County and to the Northwest Georgia region. Sergeant Ware, I think you have a couple of words you'd like to say, so you'll come to the lectern. Captain Butler, if you'd come up here in the front, face the fire.
You come up here. Yes, sir.
Oh, no, you get to take the floor right here.
Thank you. First of all, Chairman, I also thank you for all that y'all do. Polan County residents very fortunate to have the services that y'all provide and we're very proud, very honored to get to work here in county. Captain Butler coming and honoring since 2002. And at the time, I've seen her at the banner of the ranks. To this day, she's the commander of Region One and she's only one of two female captains with the Department of Public Safety that has a command. Just, she's never forgotten where she comes from. She never asked any of us to do anything that she went through right on the side of us. So, with that, she has great respect. And I just appreciate her and I appreciate y'all so. Thank y'all so very much.
Thank you. Captain Butler, if you'll stand there, I've got a proclamation to read here. Captain Sherry Butler. Whereas the state officer, Sherry Butler, started her law enforcement career with the State of Georgia Department of Public Safety in 1989 and worked her way through from patrol officer to the rank of lieutenant, becoming one of only two female lieutenants in the division. In March of 2012, Lieutenant Butler was commissioned to the rank of captain at the end, becoming one of the only two female captains in the division. And whereas Captain Butler leads by example, Captain Butler, a resident of Polan County, thank you Jesus, was assigned Region One Northwest Georgia during the tornado that struck the Darishville, Georgia. Captain Butler drove straight through the storm, almost getting blown off the interstate to reach her citizens of the Darishville to aid and assist with situation and was one of the first on the grant. And whereas on May the 6th, 2014, Captain Butler was honored by the Optimists Club of Trenton Day as a Law Enforcement Appreciation Officer of the Year. Whereas Captain Butler sets a fine example of true law enforcement officer and represents our great state of Georgia with honor and integrity. She puts public service and safety of our great state at the top of her list. Now, therefore I, David A. Austin, Chairman of Polan County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Captain Sherry Butler for her faithful service of Polan County and the Northwest Georgia region. Thank you. to Firefighter Scott Brown with the Polan County Fire Department. And I believe Captain Lee has something to tell us about it. Chuck, you come forward.
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to introduce Firefighter EMT Scott Brown for the Polan County Public Safety Award. Firefighter Brown started his career with Polan County in 2007 and has proven to be a huge asset to the department. He's currently assigned to Station One in Dallas and he's tasked with performing numerous extra assignments. One such assignment is being a certified technician to maintain and service our department's self-deep breathing apparatus. And the importance of this assignment cannot be overstated because it deals directly with the life safety of our personnel as well as them being able to go into the hazardous atmospheres and fires. Without his help, we wouldn't be able to do his, his commitment to certify these. He knows it's the life safety of all his personnel and I can't, I just can't overstate that. Scott's also attended fire instructor school. He's gone and went on to the academy on his own time to be state certified fire instructor as well as a fire control instructor to assist the training of the new fire recruits. He also assists with our annual live training learns that all firefighters have to do each year. He recently developed a training outline for interior search and rescue and rapid intervention team operations. Then he conducted the hands-on drill with all the personnel on the ship. He's currently developing more classes such as an outline for vehicle extrication, training plan, and plans on teaching those in the fall. Scott also volunteers to instruct personnel on the operation of the fire engine from hydraulic calculations of the fire pump to getting the fire engine safely to the scene. He's also assessed with testing personnel of pump operations and aerial ladder operations so they can be certified to operate these apparatus at the emergency scene. Firefighter Brown's a constant professional with an outstanding work ethic. He has a passion for the fire service and a willingness to serve the citizens as well as it's to all the firefighters. Polan County is very fortunate to have such a dedicated employee. Scott, we appreciate the volume of service.
Thank you, sir. You guys come on up. Guys, if you can stand up there, y'all have to stand up. Is this your family with you?
Yes, sir.
Come here, I'm way above your paper. Wave it in to your mic, I'll load it. Thank you very much. There are no invited guests, no bid awards, no reporting committees and departments. Do we have anyone wishing to sign up for public participation? No one signed up? Consent agenda, discuss two consent agenda items. Number one, adopt job classification 911 system coordinator for Polan County 911. Brian, your name is on the air. David, you're still, you want to talk about exactly what these two positions do. And number two, adopt job classification business license technician for the Polan County Marshals Bureau.
Good morning.
Morning. Both fairly routine items on the 911 position. This is one of the things you know, but you want to know about money. This is a reallocation for an existing budget and position. Making positions already in the budget, we're establishing this classification, not adding to the head counts, it's already covered if you voted. Basically, a better address departmental needs. They certainly respond a little better to this, but coordinated 911 Center, 911 Center of Business Software Programs, doing technical training for the employees, maintaining the system, maintaining the database, doing troubleshooting and repairs, things of that nature, also serving as liaison between David, the director, as well as vendors and other folks making recommendations for upgrades and changes.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Would you like to move to one of these two items for record session? New business, discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign and submit the annual Association of Captain Commissioners Board of A C C G Safety Discount Verification Form for my name.
Good morning. This is another money item that I'm proud to address with you. As you know, we do our workers compensation as well as our liability insurance through A C C G. And they offer safety discounts to entities that are members and meet certain safety criteria. On the liability, the maximum benefit is five percent or maximum five thousand, so that's limited to that. On the workers' comp side, it saves about a hundred thousand a year, seven and a half percent discount. Will be remiss, I've mentioned that part of our being able to get this discount is distributed to Chief Irwood as well as Tara Palmer in my office. They did a lot of work towards meeting the criteria. They obtain the Safety Coordinator Three Training that's required by A C C G. That's the highest level that they have, they have three different levels. They also ensure that we have safety meetings quarterly, that there's monthly safety materials distributed, other items like having a personal policies in place, having all the compliance with the state workers' comp board, motor vehicle checks on folks when we hire them routinely thereafter. Variety of items like that that does help on our risk management and as a result, we get this discount. Ask him that you confirm that and we'll split it to the discount.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. For the record, need to mention there was no rule business. Under new business number two, discuss action to accept the grants from the Georgia Department of Transportation, including a pass-through from the FAA to fund the environmental assessment at the Polan Northwest Atlanta Airport. Grants shall not exceed $299,095, provided ninety-five percent funding for the project. The remaining five percent shall be paid by the Polan County Airport Authority. Let's walk.
Morning. This is a redo. I did bring this grant to you. I guess it's been about six weeks ago now. However, we had four different things changed, which all required this agenda to come back to you. So, I'll explain what those four changes are. The first change is the dollar amount. Originally, we brought the grant to you and the amount was about a hundred sixty-five thousand. Due to all of the comments that were given to the FAA during the public advertisement of the scope of the environmental assessment, the scope has gone up quite substantially and we have now gone through, I guess, probably between eight and ten revisions on the scope of the environmental assessment. The scope has now been finalized, it's been accepted by the FAA, it's been accepted by the Georgia Department of Transportation. And the current scope anticipates a cost of $299,095. So, that's the first change. The second change is previously, the grant was brought to you as a direct grant from the FAA to county. That has changed as well. That was the local FAA office in Atlanta, the ADO, had expressed a desire to issue that grant directly instead of issuing it through the Georgia DOT. However, subsequent to that point in time, FAA headquarters in Washington, D.C., made the final determination that no, they did not want to issue the grant directly. They wouldn't issue the grant through Georgia Department of Transportation as they have issued all of our grants over the last five years. So, this grant is now coming to us via the Georgia Department of Transportation. So, Georgia Department of Transportation is the entity that executes the grant now. The third change is the cost share. Previously, this was a ninety-ten grant, so ninety, ninety percent was to be paid by the FAA, ten percent to be paid locally. That percentage is now broken out to ninety percent FAA, that has not changed. However, the state is now paying, picking up five percent costs, so the cost share is now ninety percent FAA, five percent State of Georgia, and five percent local. And the last change, the fourth change, deals with that five percent local. That five percent is now going to be paid for by the Polan County Airport Authority, not the Polan County Board of Commissioners. So, those are the four changes which all in and of themselves would have required us to come back to you. But, we're able to get them all done at one time now and as soon as this grant is executed, we'll be able to start the actual work on the environmental assessment. So, any questions?
Any questions? I may have just a couple of questions. What about the contract? So, the contract's not coming back to us?
No, so the contract will not be executed by the Board of Commissioners, it'll be executed by the Polan County Airport Authority.
And why, why would that be?
There are three reasons for that. The first reason is that the airport authority is paying for the match. So, since the airport authority is actually paying for it, then it only makes sense that the airport authority execute the grant. The second reason is that we have talked with FAA and Georgia DOT about grant assurances that we have agreed to over the past ten years, since we've been accepting grant assurances from the, from the state and from the FAA. You may or may not have noticed in this grant, that this grant is actually being executed by both the Board of Commissioners and the Polan County Airport Authority. That is a change. Past, those grants have only been issued to the Board of Commissioners, not to both entities. However, the state, along with the FAA, have evaluated the makeup of the airport authority in the county and how the airport is operated and they have determined that both entities should be on the grant. Not only have they determined that both entities should be on the grant, but the grant assurances that actually apply specifically to the airport authority have to do with title of the land and policy and operation and that the other contracts associated with the airport are executed by the airport authority. So, we actually, even though we have a history of engineering contracts being executed by the Board of Commissioners, the operational policy is set by the airport authority. The 139 certification that's submitted to the FAA was submitted by the airport authority. So, therefore, it is more in line with, I guess, what would be the recommended practice to have the airport authority execute the EA since they are the entity that is actually pursuing the 139, it's not the Board of Commissioners that are actually pursuing the 139.
So, how will we, at the May 27th meeting, you kind of explained it to us and you said this, when that was when we were dealing with a hundred and sixty-seven thousand and you said it would come back to us and we would vote on a contract for the LPA slash Michael Baker Group. So, we're not voting on that contract now. I know we're not now because it's not in our, on our agenda, but then you explained that we would be voting on it. And so, my question would be, why would we not? And then the other question would be, we, you kind of explained it, that as things went along, when certain parts of it got done, that we would be writing a check, right? At that time, we talked about writing a check and then it would be reimbursed.
Correct.
So, how is that going to happen now?
The procedure, as far as reimbursement of the grant, hasn't changed, except the checks will be written by the airport authority and not by the Board of Commissioners. So, the four things that I discussed at the very beginning, the changes to this grant, are the things that are in part driving the fact that this project is, or the contract that is, is not coming back to you. Previously, in May, you had committed to pay sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars as part of the match.
Right.
Now, you're paying nothing. The airport authority is.
Well, and I completely understand that. My question is, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but my question is, I understand that we're not paying that at that time, what was going to be ten percent, now it's five and we're not paying either one.
Correct.
But, we were also running everything through our county office and Tabitha was going to pay for things and we're going to refigure reimbursement.
Correct.
So, you're going to do it at the airport level, all the money now?
Yes.
You've got all the money to be able to do that and wait for it to come back?
Yes, that will be done now, yes.
Okay. So, so in other words, other than the checks that still get written in Polan County because we are the, we're in the page system instead of providing anyone but. So, when, which now my understanding, y'all have, the airport authority has already approved Michael Baker Group to do the, they voted on that last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, when Michael Baker Group submits your contract appeal, you will pay them and wait, you have the money to pay them whatever they want and wait for the grant to be issued. You'll handle all of that. And other, as far as the administration of it, the billing, all that, all that will happen is county department will receive the money and turn around to your check and you'll have to do an audit for it.
That is correct.
Okay. Couple of questions, since y'all already, have you still got more? Can I ask, man?
Ask yours because it might take care of mine.
Okay. Now, since you've already selected the contractor, as part of the agreement in the grant is you have to have DOT sign up on Michael Baker Group or whoever, do you already have that?
Yes, that is correct. State DOT as well as the FAA have both already agreed to contracts with Michael Baker. They have already reviewed all the costs, all the hour estimates, everything they have signed off on all of that.
Okay. And now, the other question is that in this grant, it states that the airport authority or, or you call it the airport, because of Polan County, is hiring a separate consultant to do a separate study, which has to be included in part of this. According to this, it says an aviation activities forecast is being prepared by a separate consultant to the airports, which shall include the service-based airport. The question is, who is that other consultant?
Who is the other consultant?
Yeah.
It is Mary Lynch, Lynch and Associates, out of, out of Texas.
Okay. And the airport authority has contacted with, contracted with her or is that a contract by somebody else?
No, it is the airport. Yes, sir.
Okay. It's only fifty-something pages.
Got fifty-nine. So, while you're looking, so the airport authority last week, which I was at the meeting, they've already approved and you've already got the contract for this sign with the Michael Baker Group.
Contract's not signed, but it hasn't been approved.
Because the airport authority approved it?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I got a question about the Georgia DOT deciding to participate in the funding.
Yes, sir.
Do you know why they decided to ante up their five percent as before they weren't going to contribute at all?
Yes, so the reason is because before, the contract was going to come directly from the FAA to, to us, so it was going to bypass the state. So, it's. the FAA to, to us, so it was going to bypass the state, so since they were going to bypass the state, the state chose not, not to participate in the funding. Now that they've gone back to the traditional practice of coming through the state DOT with it, the state is going to participate at their 5%, but they normally do.
I showed, now, 5%, the county's at $14,954, whereas the county would have been at $16,000, I think you said $700.
Yes, sir, so there's actually a cost saving to this.
Now, public participation, as I've read through this, what Michael Baker Group, as I understood, what I read, they are responsible for public comment documents, for answering questions and providing documentation, but I didn't think, they're not going to hold a public meeting, they're not responsible for holding a public meeting. Is that, am I reading that right? Because in one of the section, it says any additional public outreach activities would be billed, and when you read about public involvement, it doesn't say they will hold public meetings. Am I correct on that?
There's multiple different ways to get public participation and public involvement. One of those has actually already been done, where we advertised the scope of the EA, the RASCO, and we received over 100 comments, including massive documents from law firms out of Washington DC, and environmental consultants out of Buena County, and all kinds of stuff. So we've already received a tremendous amount of public input. But there will be another round of public input, once the, once the final EA document is put together. The decision as to how that will be done does not yet be made. FAA will play a strong role in deciding how that is done.
Okay, so then I guess what I'm getting at then, is if they choose to hold a public meeting, then, which, at this point, it's not been decided that there will be a public meeting, correct?
Correct, yes.
But if they choose to, any cost beyond what is listed in this thing, in this agreement, that Michael Baker Group incurs, such as if they're, you know, if they're, whatever they might have to do.
Correct.
You may get billed for that.
We may get billed for it. Most likely, what will happen is, if the FAA wants us to go in that direction, it will certainly ask for additional funding to cover it. That would be a little typical. But if you're just talking about a, a, one public meeting, where they have, you know, a couple of staff members show up with exhibits and documents, we're not talking about a lot of costs.
Right, and I guess I'm, I'm getting at, is I know there was some perception over the last six months, that there was going to be a public hearing on this, but in essence, according to this scope, it doesn't actually scut it out required, or say that there's supposed to be one, there's just supposed to be public input.
That is correct, yes.
And Blake, I read through the 65 pages also, I don't have it in front of me, but there are periodic payments, instead of one final payment, or instead of one payment, there's like eight different payments?
I don't know that there's a specific number of payments, there, there are periodic payments. These types of projects are done on an hourly basis, because it's all professional services fees, so it's all billed hourly. So they, they will submit, usually, usually one invoice a month, is typically what we say.
My last question is, when are they anticipating completion of the?
I can ask that question about twice a day. The difficulty with answering that question is, as we go through the process, there are about a dozen or so different agencies that are involved, everyone from the EPD, and Foreman Engineers, US Fish and Wildlife, and FAA, State Historical Preservation, all of a sudden, that could go on to the list. So as, as we complete work and submit it to different state and federal agencies for review, they have time to make their comments and make their review and submit it back to us. Sometimes that's done very quickly, very expeditiously, other times it seems to take forever. So, you know, the timeframe will take LPA to do their work is probably four or five months. The timeframe that will take for all these other agencies, state and federal agencies, to review, give comments back, revisions to be made, I can't give you an accurate answer on that, because that is too outside of our control.
This, I mean, this is not, well, Chief Earwood Station and Mr. Munford's new location is highly tied to this, so in reality, in, in real terms, you're looking at a year probably before we're cleared to re begin construction on those facility, or the fire station and the 911. Because if it's going to take Michael Baker Group five months, it took, what, six months just to get to this, this format? So, so you're, you're looking at a year, another year's delay from today, probably?
It, it could take a year, I'm hopeful that it would be more like nine months. It shouldn't take any of those agencies more than 30, 45 days to provide comments back.
But then there's also public comment that you got to deal with.
The public comment should, should be done, I think simultaneously.
Okay, so it's done as part of the Michael Baker study, because I thought, once they had employment, that they have to then submit it, get it back, revise it according to this?
It's kind of going to be the FAA's call on that, as to, as to at what point they will allow us to do that. You know, it's not that the entire document has to be complete to be submitted to the agencies. When you finish the section on, say for example, uh...
Historical preservation. You could, you could give them their...
Exactly right. So we're not waiting four or five months before we send this out to any agencies, it's going to go out to, to the agencies as soon as their section of the document is complete. So I, I'm hopeful it can be done inside of nine months.
All right, I appreciate the job you do. I've got a couple more, if that's okay. I'm sorry, I know it's been long, but I, I guess, well Tommy just brought up a point, and not that we can get in this discussion, and I don't care to right this minute, but we talked about the fire station, we talked about the 911 center, and it being, you say in a year, or Tommy's saying a year, you say nine months, and I, I think it's probably going to be a year. And I'm, Mike, I'm, I'm trying my hardest not to, to, to sound negative, but the bottom line is, I would have never voted to put a 911 center at a commercial airport. And my vote was, was to put the 911 center there. My vote was to put the fire station there for the public. Had I known that y'all were working on a commercial airport, I would have never, I would have never, would have never voted to do that. I, I don't know that in this country, and I haven't researched this, I don't have the answer, but I don't know that in this country, that we've been building 911 centers at commercial airports since September 11, 2001. And that's been the number one thing that we've looked at for security in this country, and our country's tried to outside of this country. And so it's hard for me to believe that that would be the thing for us to do, to put a 911 center at a commercial airport. And I voted to put it there, at the General Aviation Airport. Some of the questions...
Now, that can be challenged, I mean, this Board of Commissioners can choose not to build that there, I mean...
That's right.
So we can direct them to build it somewhere else, if that's a concern.
And I know that, I know that the sheriff's been waiting a long time to get space, I know that we need a 911 center, and I know we can find another place to do it, I just wanted to make it clear that I voted to put a 911 center up there along with y'all, but I, my vote would have been no, had I known it was commercial, would not have done it.
Certainly doesn't make any difference to the airport authority, whether they say or not.
And, and some of my questions today, because I, I, I'm supposed to trust the department head, and this has nothing to do with you, but I'm supposed to trust the department head to bring me information, so that I have all the information, so that I can vote to the best of my ability with the same information that everybody else has. When you brought this grant to us in May, at first it was going to be the, I think you called it the pass-through, the grant to the DOT, and then it...
Correct.
Then it changed, and you explained to us in that meeting, and you did a good job. And so it's changed a couple of times, so that's kind of one of some of my questions. One of the things that you said back then, if I can pull up my notes, was that you were going to come back to us with the Michael Baker Group, because the, and I know you've already answered this, but you said you were going to come back to us with the Michael Baker Group, because it was a contract over $50,000. And I understand that y'all are holding it, handling it now, but that was one of the reasons you were going to come back to us, and that we were, the FAA considered us to be one of the sponsors, I guess is what you call it, to one of the owners, the airport authority and us. I know that we own property out there, the Board of Commissioners. So it has brought up a lot of questions, and I think Tommy got a lot of them asked, and you, you've answered quite a bit, but when it changes this many times, and we've gone from 167 to 299, which, which I'm glad, it looks like they're going to do more of what they need to do, but in that meeting too, we were kind of told it wasn't going to change, it was going to come back to us, both the contract and the FAA grant. So a lot of things have changed, and here we are today, so that's why I've had the questions that I've had, so don't, don't take it personally.
Now, this is the first grant we've ever been issued, that is in the name of both entities, the airport authority and the Board of Commissioners, this, this is granted?
And with that said, I understand that it's in both of our names, but it's kind of hard for me to understand that it wouldn't still come to us, for us to vote on it, Michael Baker Group also. Okay. Because the grant's in both, I know you've explained it, but, okay. I still, I still feel like it should probably also come to this board.
Appreciate your...
So I recall, part of the savings was that we already had the land that's on the airport tract, so we wouldn't have to buy another tractor land to build another one, so.
Well, there, there were two items of savings there, one is you didn't have to purchase the, the land for the 911 and the, and the joint fire station. The second savings was that we ended up using FAA money to move the dirt, to do the earthwork. And the third savings was that the stormwater system and detention was, was already in, so there was a, a huge cost savings to the county for selecting that location, it really didn't have that much to do with the fact that it's an airport, it was a cost savings across the board.
And I think even with that said, I think that's definitely something that we need to go back and look at. This board needs to, if we're going to be a year from now, I guess, Mike, we're going to be bringing another contract or something else up for that, because that one's passed. And so I think it's definitely something we need to look at. And I can tell you, my vote will be different, if that's the direction that we head in, it has nothing to do with you, but I'd like to see the Sheriff's Department get the room that they need, I'd like to see us get a new 911 center, and we've talked about it for three and a half years I've been here, so we might need to look at moving in a different direction with that. Thank you.
Number three, discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the county with the Georgia Department, with the Georgia Department of Public Safety for the construction of the Georgia State Patrol post, Mr. Jackson.
Commissioners, this and the next item are related, this deals with the proposed state patrol post out of, out of the water system building, out on Bill Crewe Parkway. What this is, this first item, item three, I believe it is, is an intergovernmental agreement, wherein essentially the county is agreeing to go into the building and make the improvements to the building that will be required in order for the state patrol to occupy it as the headquarters and barracks. Pursuant to the agreement, the county will retain ownership of the building, and once the improvements are complete, the state patrol will come in and occupy it and operate their state patrol operations from that location. That's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer the questions y'all may have on that.
I'll ask you one, then I'll ask Joe, man. They'll be easy, Joe. In a nutshell, this memorandum of understanding is so that as soon as it's done, they can move in, but then we will come around and approve an official lease for the facility, as I read it, correct?
That's a great question, really three vessels here. One is this IGA to build it. Once it's built, there will be a, the next item on the agenda, which is essentially temporary occupation agreement. That'll just be a placeholder in place while the county and the Georgia State Property Commissions work through a third document, which will be the official long-term lease.
Which will be a 49-year lease.
That's my understanding, yes.
In this process, one of the things that talks about it, at this stage, we don't actually have, or do we have approved plans that they've signed off on exactly how we're going to modify the water department building?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so it talks about an architect, so we haven't engaged that architect to officially, I know we've engaged one to do some stuff, but he's not been instructed to officially draw the plans and for them to sign off.
You've seen the conceptual drawings that we presented at previous meetings, I've got both agreements for the site work, plus the architectural work sitting at my desk, awaiting an instrument to be put into place, that we've got a clear understanding between Paul County Department of Public Safety and the Georgia State Properties Commission. And this is, this is essentially an interim vehicle that allows us to keep moving forward while we wait for that long-term lease to be executed, which I understand will be executed once we get those renovations completed.
Okay. Again, I think this is in the memorandum of understanding, it, it actually talks like during that phase, the county will be responsible for repairs, maintenance, and any routine property, any, any maintenance, until there is a lease signed. Is that...
That is correct.
That is correct.
And again, that's, the intention is to, a very short-term agreement.
All right, but now, once the lease is signed, it's their responsibility to pay the electric bills, utility bills, normal property management, or, or maintenance, or are we still going to have to maintain all that?
Again, this comes back, this is an interim vehicle to get us to a point, our Department of Public Safety does not have a foot toward keeping maintenance until that long-term lease with the Georgia State Properties Commission.
Okay, so, so when the long-term lease is in place, they'll provide all that?
They will. That is the understanding, and that was on the comments that we sent back on our lease agreement draft that went to the Georgia State Properties Commission.
Commissioner Graham, in the memorandum of agreement, there is a sentence I had inserted, which says, "It is the intention of the parties that once the long-term lease is executed, that routine maintenance will be borne by the Department of Public Safety."
Okay. Any other questions? Number four, discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute a memorandum of agreement on behalf of the county with the Georgia Department of Public Safety authorizing the Georgia State Patrol to use and occupy county-owned property of the Georgia State Patrol post and barracks prior to the execution of a long-term lease with the state of Georgia for the second. Jackson.
Commissioners, that is, that again, that's vessel number two, that's the memorandum of agreement that allows them to come in there on a short-term basis.
Number five, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Mel-Sale Telecommunications, LLST, doing business as AT&amp;T Georgia, to upgrade the current computer-aided dispatch system and to assume the maintenance responsibilities for the CAD system in the amount of $273,781, with monthly recurring cost of $10,323. David Martin.
Morning.
Morning.
Before I talk about the agenda item, I would like to, to make the announcement that as of last week, all four of the major cellular telephone vendors are able to text to 911 in the county, so. We made our, our last rollout, we started out with Verizon in April, and we've rolled out up until, AT&amp;T rolled out last Wednesday, so now any major carrier, any, anybody has a contract telephone can text us or suppose making a call if they can't make a call.
We're the first in Georgia?
We're still the only in Georgia, yes, there's, I think, three other agencies that have put their request in, we're the only agencies that have rolled out. We have, Floyd County is coming over to visit with us tomorrow to see our rollout, so that they can make plans to, to move forward on their implementation. We're still the only agency in Georgia that can receive text messages.
What's the little saying, call if you can, text if you can?
Call if you can, text if you can. And so far, we've received a total of three calls, none of which were emergencies, though.
Name three texts.
Three, well, three, three texts, they're still calls for us. We received three texts, no, no emergency texts, the last one was a, I think a three-year-old who got ahold of his mother's telephone, tried to send us a photograph, so, no doubt. It scrubbed the picture, and we got the, the letters and words that came across, until his mother picked up the phone and realized who it was talking to. The, this agenda item is a, upgrades our current computer-aided dispatch system, it replaces... It replaces our entire system, the software, the workstations, all the servers. It brings in a completely new system. Uh, and we, in the past, we've been a direct customer with Interact Public Safety. In fact, we have a, a representative interacting with attendance today. We are in this, we're, we're proposing to move to AT&amp;T take over the maintenance and, uh, um, implementation of, of this particular CAD system as opposed to Interact. And the reason is, we're, we're getting a cost savings through AT&amp;T's buying power. And they also, we have onsite, uh, maintenance with AT&amp;T. They can send someone onsite to, to do some of the work if we have a major outage, they'll have somebody onsite, uh, fairly quickly. Uh, it's a cost savings to us over, it's a cost savings to us over what we would pay for the upgrade from Interact. So, we'll be paying more than we are paying now in monthly recurring charges, but we're paying less than what we would be paying if we went with Interact Direct in order to do this with AT&amp;T. And they have technicians that are trained on this particular CAD system. Uh, this is a next-generation CAD. It's, uh, it has, uh, flexibility that we don't have now. And for instance, in the future, it has potential of being hosted in the cloud. And if we were to have to evacuate the nine-one-one center, then we could go to any place that had potentially a internet connection, sit down as they call it. So, that, that's kind of flexibility we, we would have with the system. It's a complete, it's a, it's a different way of doing things than we have done in the past. Uh, and so, it's, it's more of a replacement CAD that is going to upgrade since it's the same company.
To make sure I understand what you answered, maybe, in other words, I wanted to know what our monthly costs were, in which you went through this long detail. But ultimately, under this new contract, will we be paying AT&amp;T a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand nine-hundred-seventy-six dollars a month? Or telephone, that's a year.
That's a year, yes.
That's not a monthly cost, that's a yearly cost.
That's yearly, yes. It's just about this ten thousand and, uh, ten thousand four-hundred-and-seventy dollars a month. Roughly, that's what we're paying AT&amp;T. If we do the same upgrade and we just stay with Interact Direct, we'll be paying about twelve thousand dollars a month. And that includes our telephone maintenance.
Right, that's what I was trying to... Okay, so your answer to maybe was in years from my question, was it not?
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, I understand, okay.
Hey, David, I've got an easy question. Uh, what's the life of the system?
Well, and, and it's, like, our telephone system that we upgraded some several years ago, this system will not have a lifespan. Other than, we will replace PCs as they break, or monitors as they break. The software itself will be a continual upgrade, it's included in our price. Uh, like our telephone system that we replaced with, uh, four years ago, we said that we will be the last telephone system we had to buy. This should be the last CAD system that we have to replace. We will have to replace monitors and such, you know, we, we replace PCs every three years because these are mission-critical, and we can't afford for them to fail us in the middle of a, of a disaster. So, we replace PCs every three years, we replace servers every four to five years, depending on what the manufacturer recommends, before they have a chance to fail. So, that's what you'll see, is you'll see just hardware replacements. You won't see cost for us to upgrade the actual software again. That'll be included in our, in, in the ongoing maintenance and, and the cost. If, if we have to add additional positions, if we grow, then you, you know, you'd see a, a cost for new software licenses. So, you, this should be the last CAD system that we have to purchase.
How long will the, uh, the ten thousand, you have on here, ten thousand three-twenty-three or ten thousand four per month? How long will that, how long is that good for? In other words, is there a contract for several years, or...
The initial contract was five years. And if, I mean, uh, unless there's some type of cost increase after that, you know, we'd expect the name of the new contract for a five-year period.
Two of the items down here, it, which we're purchasing, purchasing is, uh, what is it? Solocom move installation charge and a CAD move installation charge? That move, that word move is, what, I mean...
Those are included in this document, because originally when we, uh, when AT&amp;T proposed this, we were looking at moving into the new nine-one-one center. So, what they did was quote us an amount to move our current systems into the new nine-one-one center within a twelve-month period. If we make that move in twelve months, that's what it will cost us in addition. That's not included in this contract amount.
They ain't going to make that, well...
And, and that's why it wasn't included. They, they offered it as...
Okay, so, so it's an option?
No, they offered it in case that we, if we did hit it, then we would know upfront the budgetary purposes of what it will cost us to move the equipment. So, AT&amp;T would work along with Interact and Solocom to move it to ensure that we don't, we have little, no downtime hopefully when we make that move.
Number six, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with APCO. That's Association of Public Safety Communication Officials. Officials International to provide emergency dispatch protocols for the nine-one-one center at a cost not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Uh, this, this project, uh, replaces our current emergency medical dispatch protocol. These are the protocols that we use when we give CPR instructions or we deliver babies and such over the telephone. This is what we instruct citizens, how we instruct them to do it. Uh, it's, it's a very structured, uh, means of providing information to them. We've been using a local provider out of Metro, uh, Metro Atlanta for the last six to eight years. We're not very happy with the quality of their protocols, uh, the maintenance that they provided us, and, and their response to us when we have to, uh, get changes made. And so, we put out a, uh, request for bids, and we've just got three responses from APO International, Priority Dispatch, and Powerphone. Out of the three responses, APO International was the lowest bid, and their product also is the most flexible when we meet our needs. But what this does is replaces our emergency medical dispatch, and it also provides us with emergency dispatch protocols. So, we will also integrate our law enforcement and our fire dispatch, uh, into a standardized protocol, where before we've been entering the questions on ourselves, making up our own protocols, this will be a national standard protocol, and it will, it will standardize our dispatch protocol and call-taking across the board for all three disciplines.
Just this question, that it's one of the curiosity thing. I mean, your bids range from fifty-seven thousand to one-hundred thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand for the same thing?
Uh, they're, they are essentially the same thing, but the products do, uh, they, they work in different ways. Um, the, the highest bidder, which came in just under three-hundred thousand for priority dispatch, they are a very structured, very rigid protocol that allows very little flexibility on the part of the call-taker. Uh, if you don't follow their instructions to the T, and you get, and a lawsuit is filed, they won't back you up in court. Uh, Powerphone, which is the, the mid-range bidder, they are a little bit less flexible, but their integration with our CAD system was less than what we, less than what we wanted. We, we've heard some not good reports about their integration.
But, I mean, I don't like, it, it's crazy that, I mean, you got one that was five times lower than the lowest other.
And actually, the lowest bidder will allow us to go in and, and, uh, customize these protocols to what we need. The highest bidder won't allow customization at all. So, we get more flexibility from the lowest bidder, and it's, it's a very widely-used protocol. It's used in other places in Georgia and throughout the United States.
David, I admire what you and Christina have done, and, uh, they've been recognized throughout the southeast. Uh, they've been invited to be guest speakers in a lot of nine-one-one conferences. So, we're very proud, and we're going to take advantage of those opportunities, and thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular business session. Uh, we have, uh, had a request by, uh, five, hour and a half ago in executive session for personnel. Do I hear a motion going to executive session?
Motion to go into executive session for personnel, second.
Motion second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.